Okay, let's call to order the Monday, May 12, 2014, City of Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting. We'd ask you to initially please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The first item on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes for the April 28, 2014, meeting. Commissioners, any changes to those minutes?
Members, I have one change on page four. On page four, the second paragraph, about two-thirds of the way down, refers to a high-density neighborhood, but it uses the word "height," so I think the correct word would be "high."
Got that? Any other changes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair members, I do have a change. It's on page six. One, two, three, four paragraphs up from the bottom, and I'll speak slowly. Vice Chair Frank asked Wookiee how he feels about the project. Wookiee said he does not see why the city is at the table and is strike nay for a sustainable and insert not against the concept of a sustainable neighborhood development, but against the city being a fee simple holder for the process.
Okay, Commissioners, any other changes to the minutes? All right, do I hear a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstain?
I'd like to abstain as well.
Two abstains. And I kind of glossed over, we do need to do the same thing for tonight's agenda. Commissioners, any changes or concerns about the agenda for tonight's meeting? All right, do I hear a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. So next on tonight's meeting is what we're calling an informational meeting for Purgatory Creek Estates, number two, by Barry and Brian Post. The location of this development is 12420 Sunny Brook Road, Eden Prairie, Minnesota. And as indicated in my first comments there, the contact is Brian Post. If anyone does need it, his contact number, 612-850-7137. So with that, with the proponent of the project, once again, this is an informational meeting, we'd like to have the proponent come forward, talk about the project, and then we'd like to hear comments, questions, concerns from anyone in the audience who'd like to try and get answers on any concerns they've got. So with that, will the proponent come forward, please state your name and spell it for the minutes?
My name is Brian Post. I'm with Post Construction Company. And I'm here for an informational meeting regarding this development.
Could you just speak right into that mic?
I said I'm here for this informational meeting regarding this development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it?
Is there a presentation of any kind?
Well, I have a plan, so I might be putting it over on the overhead.
Okay. Why don't you, if you don't mind, just kind of do a top-line review of the project, because many of the folks here may or may not be completely familiar with it? And then we'll take time for questions once you're done.
This project was approved in January of 2000, and it's seven residential homes on an existing parcel of land. The seven residential homes are laid out here on this map, and the concept here is a cul-de-sac with lots. The homes and the neighborhood are going to be of the same style as the neighbors', other developments on the west and east side. The project is slated to start in June 2014, more towards the end of June. And the project completion for the road construction and the grading and the lots, lot pads, would be approximately August to September.
Once again, this is an informational meeting, so some of you may already be familiar with the project, some may be less familiar. Anyone in the audience that would like to come up and come to the podium and ask questions or follow up with what you've just heard? If you have any concerns or comments? Yes, please come on up. If you would, please just state your name and spell it for the minutes.
It's Brian Peterson. It's P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm a neighbor directly to the north on Cornell Court. My lot actually abuts the subject lot or site, again, to the north. There's a small berm that runs across the back of our yard. But I am interested to know from, I saw the schematic or the plans that were sent out, and they indicated some of the trees that were going to be removed. Obviously, my primary concern is just privacy, as I'm sure everybody's is. I know the market will sort out a market price, and I'm not too overly concerned about that, as I know the city's position is also in any infill projects to ensure that any of the new developments going in are very much akin to what's already in the development. So I'm sure they'll keep a watchful eye on kind of the building process itself. But I want to be sure that any of the trees that are currently in the back there, as well as any of the, you know, lower kind of underbrush, is left undisturbed as well. Can you just speak as to what that process will look like? I would imagine they'll try to keep as much of the natural habitat in place as possible.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. If you're directly north of the property, currently, right now, there aren't a lot of trees existing there. Most of the trees in the back are in the back of Lot 6, and there's one tree up in this upper corner of Lot 7.
Yeah, sorry, I should maybe clarify. I noticed from, again, the plans, that there were certain trees that were marked, and I would imagine those are some of the more prominent trees. I was referring more to the less prominent trees, but again, those that provide for a good degree of privacy back there as it stands. You know, maybe the 10-foot or less trees.
There won't be any trees taken down in the back there, because there really aren't any. And as you can see, even on the back here, back of Lot 6, all those trees are staying too. And a couple are going to be coming out in between these two houses, because they're too close to the structures. And then you can see we're planting approximately 36 trees, so three are going right here, two here, and the balance of them.
And maybe I didn't interpret the plans correctly, but does it specify exactly where the new trees will be planted?
Yeah, it does on this plan.
Okay. Maybe that's not the one that I've seen thus far. And I don't mean to dominate the time.
No, go ahead.
I've got some other questions, but I wanted to know, in terms of the actual build process, will Post Construction be constructing all the homes on-site as well?
I can't answer that at that time, because what we're doing is we're hiring a company that's a developer to put in the lots. And so by September, we feel we should have the street and the lots ready to go. We'll have the trees planted.
So will most of these be spec builds, or will you be conducting build-to-suit?
Well, I don't have an answer to that question at this time, so...
Can you answer whether or not the lots themselves will be held available to the public in terms of selecting their own builder, or is that something that you need to wait on as well?
Well, you could contact me as soon as you'd like, but at this time, there's nothing definitive on, you know, the ownership of the lots, and they won't be lots till September.
Got it. Yeah, I'll have a considerable number of additional questions for you, but I'll contact you offline for those.
Okay, feel free to do that.
Thank you. Yes, come on up, please. Please just state your name and spell it for the minutes, please.
It's Terry Morris, T-E-R-R-Y-M-O-R-R-I-S. How are you doing, Brian? Good to see you again.
Hey.
I just have a question, and it's my faulty eyesight. If you could put the plan back up, please. So our home is going to be right where the cul-de-sac begins. So Lot 7, if you move over where the home, right where the cul-de-sac is, because I believe that's where the apple tree is that says it's coming down?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's the middle of my backyard.
Okay.
So my question is, for those homes that are all the way down following the road, you know, the road that leads up all the way to the cul-de-sac, where the lots back in, not the woods side, but the other side, will there be any privacy trees or bushes or anything that you'll plant there to abate the noise or give some privacy to the existing neighborhood? I just couldn't read the, I couldn't read the small one. I apologize. It may be there on the large one.
Okay, well, that's okay. I think as well as you know that along Lot 7, that property owner has quite a few trees planted right here.
Yes, he does.
And then your property is right in here.
Yes.
And all the trees that are on that property line now, besides that 10-inch apple, are slated to stay in place.
Correct, but all along that line, going all the way down to Sunny Brook, will there be any type of privacy trees, bushes, anything like that planted?
Not new ones, but as you well know, there's quite a significant amount along this lower portion, all the way probably up to the neck of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so if we wanted to plant something, then, once the lots are cleared, once the road's done, September would be the time for us to plant something as well?
Right. And once again, you're right in this area from, say, the top of the cul-de-sac.
Yes, I actually have the most trees. I'm feeling pretty good about that.
Okay.
All right. Answer my question. Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Yes, please come on up. I'm being repetitive, but please state your name and spell it if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is Mark Schwartz, M-A-R-C-S-H-W-A-R-T-Z.
Thank you.
I live at, thank you, I live at 9303 Coldstream Lane, which, if we have the map back up, is the lot that abuts to his lot number one, right on the corner of Coldstream and Sunny Brook. About 10 years or so ago, we and our neighbors, in fact, here this evening with us, spent a fair amount of money having Prairie Restorations come in to put prairie grasses and wildflowers around the retention pond that straddles both of our respective lots. Our main concern here is to raise awareness tonight, that, especially given some prior history, back in 2007, there was some excavation that was done on this new development. I have some pictures here, in which much of the dirt that was moved, actually was moved onto the prairie grasses and wildflowers that are behind our homes. And so I primarily want to raise awareness and a sensitivity to, as the construction takes place, especially with the road being on that side of the property, that as that excavation and clearing takes place, that there be a sensitivity to any damage that may result to the prairie grasses and wildflowers that are around the retention pond. And presuming that, I would guess the city would be responsible at some point for snowplowing of that road once the development is finished, that there also be a future sensitivity to snowplowing and snow removal that may result in snow being piled onto those prairie grasses and wildflowers as well.
Any reaction to those comments, Brian?
I can add one thing that, if you'd look on the map for a second, there's an area of 11 feet between the road and the property line, and nothing is going to be done in that area. There'll be some final grading along here, but that is it, and the majority of the construction is going to be from this property line to the east.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Good points, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about anybody else? Yeah, come on up, please. You know to state your name and spell it if you would.
My name is Dustin Capelli, C-A-P-P-E-L-L-I. I just had some questions. Hi, Brian. I'm not one to worry about what people are doing with their business and, you know, build. I'm not one of those type of neighbors. But out of any of the lots, mine seems to be affected pretty greatly, since that's where the neck of the road is, and I have nothing planted there. Now, I realized over time something was going to get built there, so I don't have much of a complaint in that area. But where I do have somewhat of concern, and I don't know if there's anything I can do about it, but is, there's now a road in my backyard, pretty much. You did clarify something by saying there's 11 feet of stuff there, but to me, I all of a sudden have a road on top of a, I don't know, I don't know how high the hill is, but it's 10-foot. You know, when, in winter, if a car slides off, that goes right down my back hill. I would like something to be planted there, and I would be happy to work with someone when that time comes, but, you know, this might be just something where there's nothing I can do, and that's fine. But I just wanted to voice a concern about it. I don't know if there's anything I'm missing, Brian, that you could say about that, but...
No, but I've, you know, as you well know, I've been on the site a little bit, and, you know, you're more than welcome to plant as many trees, you know, but you can understand we have that grade change.
Yeah, that's what I was...
And I can tell you that the grade level of the road along your property line is between one foot taller than that crest.
Okay.
And then in the furthest south area, it's approximately 2 and 1/2 feet. And that grade will be blended down to the very existing grade.
Okay.
And it's going to flatten out a little bit too there, because we don't want runoff and things like that.
Okay. But you understand what my concern would be, right?
I do understand your concern, because you don't have a lot of trees planted up there.
I have nothing planted, so, all right, thank you.
How about anybody else? Anyone else have comments they want to make or questions? Yes, please come on up. Would you state your name, please, and spell it for the minutes?
My name is Laura, and the last name is Florida, like the state. And I live on Princeton Avenue, which is the property that backs up to the wetlands, which the last two lots, the cul-de-sac lots...
Could you please speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. So my question or request would be that there are several mature trees that line the property line backing the wetlands, that seem to be favorite places for bald eagles and other natural wildlife to perch. Are you planning on leaving those? I'm not sure if they're on your property or if they're actually in the wetlands, because I haven't walked the...
No, I think the area you're talking about is...
Yes.
Is down more over into here.
Okay.
So like I said, this is where the property line is, and we're not touching any of these trees along this area at all.
Okay. Great.
And we're planting three more in back in here.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about anybody else? This is your chance. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name's Ed Requet, R-E-Q-U-E-T. I live at 9248 Harstead Lane, so I am on the opposite side of the property, behind looks like lots three and four.
Just a couple of questions that I have regarding this, and I've known Brian for quite some time. We've been there for 17 years. I went through the Planning Commission back in 2000 with this development. One of my questions, and Brian answered this, is that it is still along the same proposed development as it was in 2000, and that the homes and lots are going to be in consideration and consistent with what the surrounding area is. Because when this was proposed, there was no development on, is it Coldstream? There was no development on Coldstream or the Cornell, none of that was there. So I just want to make sure that the development and the properties, the houses, are going to be fit with the genre of the local, what's there now, is number one. My biggest question at this point is the timeline of construction. You said that starting the road grade and the lot, the lot grading and development would be done sometime by September. What are we looking at timeline for the houses to be developed?
Well, I guess to answer that question, you know, it would depend on, you know, who purchased the lots. And, you know, the average house takes maybe three to five months to build, so it just, I guess I don't know how to answer that question, because more than likely, a large company is going to come in and purchase all these lots. And they'll probably do, you know, a model and the standard, sell and build and sell and build.
So we may be looking at construction there over the next one, two, three years?
I would say for the next, depending on the timeframe when the start was, if they started anything in the fall, it might be one, then the following spring, it might be two, maybe three. So I would say it might take a couple of years, but more than likely, it could be less. That's...
Okay. And the answer to your first question, and I don't know if you got that, the question about compatibility and how the development fits into the surrounding...
Yeah, the development will be slated for homes at a minimum compatible to the both sides of the street, so...
And my question with that, then, would be the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the lots, if I remember back to 2000, the lot sizes are at the city's minimum allowance for the city lots. And the lots, our lot and the lots on our street, and I think the lots on the, is that Coldstream Street, are bigger than what the city, what the city's minimum is. So my concern is if we're looking at smaller lots, it's going to be quite difficult to create houses that are the same size, same aesthetics, on significantly smaller lots.
Okay.
Okay, well, I can elaborate on that. These lots, these three lots along your side here, are at that 13,500 minimum. And then these lots here are a little bit bigger, but the width on these lots will take, you know, a 60-foot to 64-foot wide home. I don't know how, you know, square footage-wise, I'm sure these homes are going to be between 4,800 square feet and up.
Okay. I mean, I think it'll be important, the comments that you folks are making are important to hear at the beginning of the process, and I think it'll be important to continue a dialogue as this development proceeds, so that you're getting pretty regular feedback for your issues.
From who should we expect to get that feedback from?
Well, I think initially, I'd stay in touch with Brian. I think certainly the city would be happy to answer questions that might, that might be directly relevant to it. Mike, thoughts? Do we want to be available to answer questions on this development, or is it best to go to Brian, do you think, overall?
They could talk to Brian about what types of houses they're going to build, where they're going to be on the lot, where they're going to plant the trees. If they have other questions just about construction in general, and this, construction of the streets and the ponds and the grading and erosion control, I would direct those towards our engineering department. And anyone in engineering could answer your questions.
Good.
Any other questions forward to, again, Mike, regarding the grading?
Grading, drainage, utilities, the ponds and streets, any of those technical questions, construction questions, I would bring those forward to the engineering department. We could talk with Rod Brew or Mary Kraus or Randy Slick. All of those are involved in review of construction projects, issuance of permits.
I think maybe you had, do you want to ask some more questions?
Thanks. And you may have answered it in part already, but throughout this process of the build, will there be any more meetings in these chambers, or is it all, at this point, kind of in the hands of the developer to run forward and follow code and do all those things? Is it a pre-prescribed process that they follow, and will there be any more need for follow-up meetings of this nature?
Yeah, good question. I mean, I think, I think, Mike, it would be advisable to have periodic updates. So your thoughts on that?
No, this is probably our one chance at an informational meeting in front of the Planning Commission. This is something that is, it's not required.
Okay.
We asked the developer to do this, because it's been 14 years since the project was approved, and some people weren't here at the time that the project was being proposed, and people have moved in and out of the neighborhood. And we didn't want people waking up one morning, and there's some construction activity going on, and you call the city, what is this all about? So we wanted to make, bring people up to speed with what we knew, what we have on our records and what's proposed to be built, and you can get familiarized with the builder and get his business number and contacts. If you have any of those sort of individual what's going on questions, he's the best person to answer that. And if you're wondering if they're doing things correctly, you can call the city and talk to somebody in engineering about that.
Good, yeah, and I appreciate everyone who was responsible for putting together this meeting and for the Post as well, doing so, because I am one who was not here 15 years ago when this development was approved. And so it, I thought perhaps at some point something would go back there, but it definitely hit me over the head when I saw that this was going to be happening now.
So it sounds like even though we won't be doing updates in here, based on Mike's answer, that there is significant resource available, whether it be Brian or folks in the city and engineering or planning, to address issues as they come up during the process?
Good. Oh, and I'll be sure to reach out to Brian. One quick last question that I had, too. I understand that this is just a rendering as you've kind of mapped out the site. Is it fair to say that the housing footprints that you've got located here will be pretty true to form?
I believe so. What I've got drawn here basically are all, you know, garages on the uphill side, because the land naturally drains this way. Some of them might not be quite this footprint. They might, you know...
Yeah, oh, my concern, as you can imagine, is just the setback.
Yeah, the setbacks are governed, the 30-foot setback.
Okay.
And they have minimum sides setbacks that you have to adhere to.
Good. All right. Thank you very much.
How about anybody else in the audience? Like, please come up. You know the routine about spelling and...
My name's Matt Flech, F-L-E-S-C-H. And actually, my question is for you in engineering, just actually based on a comment from Brian here about the way the lots are going to drain. I am on Harstead Lane, which is parallel to the subject property, and the bulk of the pond is actually behind my house. Then we'll back up to the new properties. And so if everything's going to drain that way, I'm wondering if it doesn't need to be dredged, because as it is today, even in this spring, it's, you know, it's fairly full. And I think someone earlier referenced 2007, there might have been some washout in our pond, as well as the one on the other side of the road. So it's potentially going to need to be dug out.
The, if I understand your question, which side of the development are you on?
We're on the east side.
East side? Okay. It appears that that pond drains across the road on Wilderness Cove down to the next pond.
Okay.
This development, this development as well, the one addition from, from the plan that was approved 14 years ago was the addition of an infiltration basin in that, in what would be the southeast quadrant of this development. That will drain into the storm sewer system in Sunny Brook Road and go down to the same pond that, on Wilderness Cove.
Okay. Okay, so as long as you're not envisioning any, any issues with it, that's, I trust you, but just calling it to your attention.
Yeah, this subdivision will, will be picking up its drainage in the street, and then the backyard drainage or the lot drainage will go into the infiltration basin, which will then overflow into the storm sewer, which will go down to that pond on the south side.
Great, thanks.
I could elaborate one thing to answer your question, too, just to give you some assurance, that there's a significant grade difference between the property over where you are. Are you like right behind this Lot 1?
Um, lot...
Or Lot 2?
Lot 2.
Yeah. And there is no way that any drainage can go and cross that pond into your pond, because it's approximately 3 to 4 feet taller.
Yeah, I haven't been over it.
Right.
I haven't crossed the pond, so, all right, thanks.
Okay, how about, did you have some comments? Okay. Did we just learn your name, and would you spell it, please?
My name is Lee Smith, S-M-I-H-E-T. 9231 Coldstream Lane. And I was the one that sold the land for the Coldstream development. Now, do I understand that Posts are not going to build these homes and sell it lot by lot? Is that what it's going to be? Or are you going to sell them all to one contractor?
Our goal is to sell the lots to a contractor, a large builder, at this time.
All at one time, not lot by lot? Because I've lived through these buildings of this, and they're work on Sundays, work till 10 o'clock at night, work Saturday. I've had them here near by my front yard, so I just want to know that when this gets going... going, it ends at some time, that it doesn't, we don't have lot by lot, and then have this Sunday building at six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. Does somebody watch this now?
I guess I would ask Mike and the group, are there some code restrictions in terms of hours of construction in the city and so on? We realize that the lots will all be turned over to, or sold to a developer at one time, but then when the construction's actually occurring...
We do have construction hours of activity during the day, and prohibitions on weekends, and from time to time, we get people that start early and work late, and usually what happens, there's a call to the police department, they go out and investigate it, and they work with the contractors with corrective actions, so that they're not doing that. What we've had to do in some projects is file declarations of restrictions and covenants that basically say that if you are building a house and you're violation of some of the city rules and regulations, that the city will not issue any more building permits for that house to continue, or issue permits for new lots until everything's remedied on the lot where there may be a violation. So that way, you really limit the amount of potential of having seven lots out there with activity going on all different times of the day and evenings.
Okay.
The one advantage of selling this to one builder, and the way things have gone in the last couple of years in Eden Prairie, they're building the lots out very quickly. I'd be surprised if this actually took two years, given the number of lots that we currently have on the market now, and there's very few other parcels in town where we can subdivide, where we'll contribute very much to the inventory.
Thank you.
And then there's one other concern, there is a well up there that needs to be capped on that property. But you should be aware of that.
Brian, any reaction to that?
Yeah, we're all aware of the well that's up there.
Mm-hmm. I'm going to have...
So you raised, you raised a good issue in terms of the hours during which construction can take place?
Yes.
So I think you kind of keep track of that as it goes on, and if you think there are any issues, you could bring it to the city's attention, or to Brian's, and, or the developers...
What we can do is call the police department, as you're saying.
Well, I think I would, what do you think?
Well, we have one full-time code enforcement officer for the city, and that's generally during business hours. We have to rely upon the police department for enforcement of all types of activities related to the city code.
Okay.
So they're out and about, they've got their sergeants and lieutenants covering the different parts of the town.
Okay.
Police officers that are assigned each shift twenty-four hours a day, so if you call in, someone will be out there quickly to take care of it.
So it sounds like you have some resources to help you with those issues as the project...
Because on the weekend, the city is closed, and the office, so you have, so that's when you have the police department backing you up. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Mike will never elaborate on the hours.
Seven to seven. Monday through Saturday, now on Sunday.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I speak, one minute?
Sure, come on up. Just state your name and spell it.
My name is Steve Wagner. I live at 9325 Wilderness Cove. I've been part of the post development on that property. And I'm sorry, Mike, or Rod, your comments about contacting people with the city, I mean, might as well fall on deaf ears. That's not the case. I've been down that road, I've been with Randy Slick, four years next door it took to build the house next to me, with drainage that still comes onto my property when it rains hard. When these things get delayed this long, issues occur, and people like Gene Dietz are long gone, or Al Gray, you know, way over their heads, I'm sorry. But when you say call the city, or get ahold of people, I've got Kevin Schmead's personal phone number, and that doesn't do any good. We've been down that road. This gentleman right here, his property down that he currently lives on, that he is in violation of the conservation easement for mowing and trimming back that conservation area down on the creek. Nothing gets done. So, you know what, I think, when I hear that somebody's going to go in and develop that, I'm spirited, I'm glad to hear that. But this is what some of these neighbors want to hear about, because the last development for six houses took almost twelve years to build. That's what they're concerned about. They're not concerned about necessarily the quality, but it's the wear and tear, and the constant calling, and the constant pounding on Sundays, and builders sleeping in their cars, and guys peeing down in the park, or for any other reasons. It's unlicensed vehicles, and as far as Mr. Shadine following up on things, you know what, that, that falls on deaf ears, too. He's like, nobody wants to take any issues, or raise any havoc, or create any commotion. I think it's time that sincere effort be put in to be certain that, he has a right to develop his property, but he doesn't have a right to impinge on our privacy and our rights to be able to sit out in the evening and enjoy it without lawnmowers, without tractors, without digging up people's pine trees and their wildflowers. That's not, and I'm sorry to go on like that, but I've lived next door to it for a long time, and I think it's time to hear this. And when I call up, and they say, well, we really don't know what's going on, I think it's time. And I realize this probably isn't the committee to get it done, but the city council or somebody needs to be certain that they get the gumption to say, hey, we're going to handle this development and do it right, and we're going to get somebody that can afford to do it, or get the people in there that can, and he can reach an agreement with a developer and get it done right, but not to impede on our rights as property owners that are adjacent to that. I don't want to listen to it anymore, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Brian, do you want to, any comments?
I've got no comments on that, except for people have the rights to do things, and, you know, like I said before, we're slated to do this property, and hopefully you can sell it to a larger builder, and have it kicked out as fast as we can, but...
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, well, I think, I think the important thing that we just heard is there are some sensitivities there, so we certainly want to keep those in mind. Yes.
You've indicated a couple of times, your hope is to sell this to a larger developer. Have you begun the...
Could you, could you come up to the podium, so we can all hear, please?
Brian Peterson again. You'd indicated a couple of times tonight that your hope is to sell to a larger developer. That makes me actually feel a little bit better, provided the developer is obviously a quality one. Have you begun those negotiations at this point, or is that a hope and a prayer?
We've begun negotiations, but I don't have anything specific to elaborate on that at this time, so...
I'm not expecting anything specific, just wanted to know where you are in the process.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
How about any other comments? These have been some great input comments. Any other comments about this development? Okay, I think we've heard some pretty important comments, and in terms of the future of the project, I want to just mention again that Brian's contact number is six one two eight five zero seven one three seven. I'll read that one more time. It's Brian Post, six one two eight five zero seven one three seven. Or as you heard in the discussion, if there are issues that the city can help with, the planning department or the engineering department, depending on the issue, please feel free to contact the city. With that, I'd like to give the commissioners a chance, if they have any comments or questions they'd like to ask of Brian regarding the project. Any comments or thoughts you'd like to bring up? Anybody? Okay. Mike, any further comments you'd like to make, or...
No, sir.
All right. Brian, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate you coming here tonight. I think we heard some important things that people are concerned about, and we thank each of you for coming up and mentioning those. I would encourage you to watch the project and get in touch with the appropriate contact if you do have issues. And thanks, thanks for your time.
Can I elaborate on one more thing, too?
Sure.
I would appreciate it if people would be, if they're going to call me with questions that it's of a significant nature, it's, they don't feel it's like something where we need to give everybody a play-by-play on exactly what's happening in a development, because contractors are installing the streets, sewers, and ponds to their schedule, weather-related and things like that. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows, if you, if you have something that's a real concern, feel free to call me anytime.
Okay, that's certainly a good comment. Everybody, if you'll just help, make good use of the people's time who are involved in the project, we'd sure appreciate it. That ends the informational mea... Sorry?
Would we be notified if the lots were sold?
Any comments on that?
I'm sorry.
Her question was, would we be notified if the lots were sold?
When the contractor...
Mike, you have any comments on that?
We really don't know if when the lots are sold until they come through our assessing department. And usually, the record of this, if there's a transaction, he's selling it to a company, there's usually a little bit of delay from the time that they close on it, until we actually get the records at the city, because it usually goes through the county before we get it. Otherwise, the only other way we know about the selling of the property is after the house is sold and built, someone comes in, files for homestead, and then we know the property's been sold.
Okay, thanks, everybody. That ends the informational meeting. Brian, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And good luck with the project. Hope you folks have a good dialogue. All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is variance number 2013-10 by Collegiate Group. This is a continued item. The location is 6640 Shady Oak Road, and as I think most of the commissioners know, it's all about permitting a 176-square-foot building identification sign on the north elevation, the same on the south elevation, and a 50-square-foot building identification wall sign on the east elevation. City code permits one building identification wall sign per wall, per street frontage not to exceed 50 square feet. Once again, the applicant is requesting a continuance to the June 9th, 2014 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Is the chair still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the continuance passes. With that, the next item on the planners, or on the, for tonight's meeting, is the boards and commission banquet is coming up this Wednesday, May 14th. We just asked that everybody RSVP your response to Lori at the email address indicated in our minutes here. If you're bringing a guest, please indicate their name, just so they can be prepared for that. And that should, that's certainly something we're looking forward to.
It'll be a good time.
Yep, we're looking, we're looking forward to it. With that, any reports from members of the commission? Anything you'd like to say? Any reports of any kind? Any continuing business, or new business? All right, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.